If there's an emergency, just exit out the door there, hang on left and get out of the building. That's all it took. We're going to have a public hearing now. Marshall's 10, 10 and 12 May. Lot line adjustment, potential approval for the resolution. Public hearing is now open. Is there any public comment on the public hearing?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Andrew Maggio. I'm the owner of property to the north of David Marshall's property under Terra Magius LLC. I have to state to the board that I object to the border, to the lot line adjustment because the, I've had a, since 2007, when I originally bought and was in contract for that property, David Marshall expanded his backyard onto my property. I have a survey from 2007 which clearly shows, the applicant's own survey that was submitted on July 17th, along the border, the northern border with Terra Magius, says discrepancies exist between document number this, which is the survey, another document, boundary line agreement recommended. That's what I've been trying to talk to Dave about for the last 17 years. He refuses to sign that. So, the true line is the line on the survey. The line, as it appears, goes over my property substantially, and it's where David has put additional grass and expanded his backyard. So, one of the obligations of this board is to, and that's a cloud on my title, I can't mortgage my property, I can't sell my property, because there's a boundary dispute. So, one of the obligations of this board, as you know, is to make sure that whatever it does, it doesn't affect any of the neighboring properties. So, this boundary line does affect, the northern boundary line affects my property, and by agreeing to move the southern line, from the last meeting that I heard, there was some anticipated sale of the property, whether it's lot two or lot one, either which one affects my property. And I, and again, by, and I have plenty of additional letters with Dave's lawyers, other documents from 2007, 2017, letters back and forth, the northern line is in dispute. So, the southern line shouldn't be authorized, shouldn't have an authorized adjustment if the northern line has an unauthorized adjustment. And I can present, if you have further questions, I can present you with a multitude of documents that show how long this has been going on and what the problem is. But I would tell you now, since it's already in your possession, land surveyor Bambi Terrell, this is the survey, proposed lot line change. Write up the note on Mr. Marshall's own survey underneath Terra Magius, discrepancies exist, right here.
Thank you.
If you can get up and speak. Is there any other public comment? Open for discussion, any other public comment? As I see none, what should we do? Referring to you.
Typically, as a land use matter, it's not the planning board to resolve boundary line disputes. But what I would recommend at this point is that you continue the public hearing, have the neighbor provide whatever documentation he has so that it can be reviewed by both your engineer and your attorney, and we can, we could come back and revisit this in September.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. You were saying that?
Please stay with the microphone, ask, and closer.
I'm sorry, closer? So, what I would suggest is that the board continue the public hearing, you submit whatever documentation you have so that your engineer and our firm can review it. But what I did say at the outset is that typically, land use boards do not get in the middle of property disputes. We take things as they come, but we will look at, you know, I would suggest that we look at the information and we can make more of an informed opinion about that for you.
Yeah, I have a question. This will ultimately be resolved in courts. I mean, if it's not within our purview, so our looking at it again and making a decision is almost, great, here's our decision, now someone's going to go and reverse it.
Yeah, ideally, it's resolved among the private property owners first.
Guys, he's having trouble, we're having trouble hearing at all. Microphones need to be closer in, please. They're even in the room.
Okay.
Okay. If we have no jurisdiction in this, or we have, I just wonder why we're even getting into it if ultimately, what we say may not matter and the courts will end up being the body that resolves this.
Just that, I think because you're in the middle of a public hearing, it's fair to have that information presented to the planning board and make it part of the record so it can be reviewed. I don't think it'll change, you know, based on my experience, what my opinion would be. I think the board can go ahead, I mean, you know, in my experience, and I've seen this before, you know, boards have gone ahead and they've actually approved subdivisions, and then it's resolved outside of the planning board's purview in court, or, you know, preferably by settlement. But, you know, again, I just, to be due diligence, I think it's worth having whatever information the neighbor has and reviewing it, and then revisiting this in September.
Do we need a motion?
So, Mr. Maggio, can you provide all of the documentation to this board in advance of our next meeting, which is in, what, September?
September.
September 11th.
Within due time for the engineer and the lawyer to review it?
Yes, I absolutely can. I'm prepared tonight to give you, I have copies made. If you give me specific instructions, send it direct to Mr. Andrew's office or to the planning board secretary.
Everything goes to the planning board secretary, please, sir?
I'll put together a package, and I will lay everything out for you and get that to you before September, what?
11th.
September 11th.
It would be actually two weeks before that, sir.
Two weeks before.
September 11th.
So, give me a date certain, please.
I'm getting it. August 26th.
Yeah, that's not a lot of time, but I'll do it. I'll do it.
Head all right around.
I'll do it.
Each time you need.
Thanks, Dave. I appreciate that.
There is a long weekend in there, too, so. Holiday weekend.
Yeah, but, you know, to remind the board, the board's got an obligation to make sure this lot line doesn't adversely affect any of the properties involved. My property's involved, I received notice for it, and it's an adverse situation. That's all I can tell you. Because if you approve this lot line with the northern line out, when the applicant's own surveyor says that there's a recommended border agreement, I don't see changing one border when there's another border. The time is ripe to resolve everything here. And it's quite clear that Mr. Marshall is on my property, okay? He's encroaching on my property, and it's diminishing the value of my property. And I don't think the town really wants to get involved in endorsing or protecting that type of behavior. There's lines for a reason. I'm not on his property, he's on my property. I wouldn't be here if 15 years ago, this was resolved with a simple border agreement. And I told Mr. Marshall, you can leave your backyard where it is, just acknowledge the line is where it is, indemnify me in case one of your guests goes on my property and gets injured, and you can have that backyard. I'm paying taxes on that. That's fine. But it's now gotten to a point where there's absolutely no cooperation, it's completely unreasonable, and I bought that property. I'm not in his backyard, I'm not in anybody else's backyard, and I'm allowing him to continue the use if he signs a simple border agreement that just says, the line is where the survey says it is, not on the edge of your grass, which is substantially, and this isn't, we're not talking about six inches or two feet, this is a substantial incursion into my property, which happens to be 166 acres, so, and it's in a corner of the property that I really don't use, but it's a substantial incursion.
How far do you really think that property might have smacked on from my place to your place? How far do you think it reaches?
Well, may I just suggest, if you guys want to have a conversation?
You got to do it.
You can take it outside, and ideally, if you guys can figure it out before September, that would be the best for all parties, I would think.
So, what you do is continue the public hearing through, next month to September 11th. That's what's going to have to happen, okay? I need that in the motion.
Make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I still carry, so now we're going to move on, the public hearing is continued on. So now, we're going to move on to our regular meeting. Silo, yes.
Thank you.
Lot number 327 and 329 subdivision, site plan, resolution, potential approval. Go ahead.
Amanda Rep, just reintroducing myself, I'm here with Stoneleaf, representing the owner of the property. On the agenda, it says 327, it's just 27, 27 and 29. That's okay.
Shifting numbers on.
Yeah.
Shift.
That's okay. Okay, I believe that we had the public hearing last month, and tonight is to discuss the resolutions and a potential approval for the project. Yeah, I'm not sure if you would like to hear anything more from me.
Can you do that, Ray?
Okay.
Give me a minute, Mr. Chairman.
You can leave while I wait.
So, basically, from my position, prior to the public hearing, they did submit a subdivision plat and a site plan. I did review both of those. The plat as submitted does comply with the town code requirements for a minor subdivision plat. The site plan is sufficient in detail to allow for a proper review, so we did conduct the public hearing. Any of my other previous comments had been satisfactorily resolved, and any of the open issues, which are fairly typical, owner's consent note, permission to file with the Dutchess County Department of Health, the surveyor certification, and a consolidation deed are all typically handled as conditions of approval. And then again, I think that, based on the comments we received last time, and just a reminder, and I'll let Paul finish it, this particular development has been the subject of review and approval by the internal design review committee for Silo Ridge, and as such, they've signed off. So, that is, I think, evidence that it's satisfactory to the neighborhood and that you can consider the various resolutions for approval.
I've got nothing more to add to that. We have draft resolutions for the board's consideration. I'm glad to answer any questions.
I just was curious, what is, if you can share, the relationship between the design review committee and the HOA, and the members of each, just so that we can get a better sense of structure?
The design review committee essentially works for the HOA. So, the review committee is the board that reviews all plans, potential plans, ideas, designs that come to them for any changes within the community, any new buildings within the community, and they are the entity that review whether or not it complies with the guidelines, makes that decision and determination, and if it complies, then it moves forward.
And there's overlap in the two, between the DRC, the design review committee and the HOA numbers?
That I'm not sure.
Okay.
I requested at the last meeting, the minutes showing the approval, and have we received them as yet?
Yes.
Do you think it's on your side?
I think they're.
That's what came in from the attorney. It came in from the attorney yesterday, or, I think I sent it over to you on Sunday.
Okay. Yeah, but after the last meeting, you did, I did circulate what I had been given, and I think Judy kindly sent it on to everybody. So, you should have gotten a complete history of the minutes. And I think their attorney did summarize for the board the relationship that you were seeking. I think there was a submission that Paul circulated Monday evening, perhaps?
Mm-hmm.
Sunday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew it was one of those days. And the only thing procedurally I would have to say is that in considering the resolutions, you technically should do the lot line change first to be followed by the site plan. Because until you approve the lot line, the combined lot doesn't exist. Just a, it's just a technicality, but I want to make sure it's, you dot the i's and cross the t's, folks.
What's your pleasure? Would you like to move forward with this? Board, pass it on.
Ken, are you okay with the materials in the packet?
I'm looking to see where the HOA has said, or the design, somewhere here. I'm seeing, I'm seeing Stoneleaf, I'm seeing names that go along with that, but I'm not seeing the community, or the HOA, or. The design review committee is about, the only thing I see here in that.
The design review committee is the entity that reviews the plans and would approve or reject them.
And do they have to then go to the HOA and seek?
No, they work for, they are, they were appointed for the HOA. Yes.
They are part of the HOA. They're a duly constituted element of the HOA. So, in other words, the HOA is the overarching body, they establish the design review committee, it's made up of, I think, members of the HOA plus staff from Stoneleaf and/or their management firm, which I don't think they're both the same, but they do review, and they review not only this particular one, any of the estate lots are required to have a sign off from the design review committee as well.
Yeah, my concern is, and it's nothing that we have any control over, it's just the structure of all of this. When you have a design review committee that is made up of the contractor and.
Well, he's not. Yes, Stoneleaf specifically is not part of the DRC.
Okay. It just, somewhere, it feels like the community is not fully involved, but that is nothing that is our business.
That would be so, and this is not untypical of a large-scale development where you have an HOA. The HOA, which is comprised of the members and has its own board, will set up a committee that will also draw from the members, and those are other property owners within the development, and they'll make the decisions and evaluate it, but they'll have, you know, a staff. Stoneleaf would be staffed.
I understand all that. Somewhere, I can see a disconnect between the HOA and their design review committee, which, which is not our business.
No, that's an internal element that's beyond our control.
Yeah, and they have no notice, they, yeah, they have no notice requirements or that sort of thing. You know, that doesn't mean you have no role, it just means that, as I think John said, it expresses, under whatever construct, whether you agree with it or not, that it's okay with the rest of the community, you know, and if they want to vote those HOA members out, you know, they probably have a way of doing that at some point.
So, I mean, just to pick up on that point, if the materials in our packet are design review committee meeting, meeting minutes, and there's no one from Stoneleaf on the design review committee, the only people that are going to these design review committee meetings are Stoneleaf people. So, I guess I just don't really, still don't really quite understand the structure.
There are certain, certain individuals who overlap with Stoneleaf and other entities within Silo.
Okay.
So, they are not there, so Mike Dinaco, as an example, is part of the DRC committee, he presents the information to the DRC, he also is our pre-construction manager, so he is the one that's walking our homeowners through the entire pre-construction process. But he is a part of that DRC.
So, the people that attended the DRC review meetings are Natalie, who's from Stoneleaf, Natalie Manrique, Juan Torres, who's from Stoneleaf, and Mike Dinaco, who is emailed from Silo Ridge but works for Stoneleaf. And that's, both of the meetings, minutes that are provided have those folks in attendance, and those are the people that signed off on the design, but they work for Stoneleaf. Correct? That's correct.
To some level, yeah. All right.
My problem.
Well, but truth be told, truth be told, Juan is also one of the project sponsors, he also is a multiple property owner, in fact, I think his own residence is in there. So, he has HOA involvement, and basically, when the, when Stoneleaf or Silo Ridge Field Club turned everything over to the HOA, the HOA had the ability to appoint or unappoint any of the members. So, they're not there, they had to be approved by the HOA.
They are the HOA. It appears as though they're all the same people.
Nina, I don't, I don't, I don't presume to know, because that wasn't my charge to review how it was. My understanding is that at a given point, and I forget what the percentage of lots transferred out of ownership, that the control of the HOA was handed over to an HOA board, okay? Now, there may still be remnants of Stoneleaf and Silo on that board, but there are other constituted individuals on that HOA board. Now, what that listing is and what that internal structure is, I quite honestly don't think it's my responsibility to keep track of, and alls I can go by is, I get official correspondence that says the Silo Ridge Design Review Committee, and that's what I have to go by.
With the recent restructuring going on over there with Discovery Land and all that coming in, did they change the membership of the HOA or the leadership of the HOA?
I have no idea, and I think that it's irrelevant to this matter.
Well, you do, I don't, so we can disagree. All right.
That's certainly information we can find out, but I guess, I'm not sure how that directly affects this, but I do globally, so don't, I'm not, I'm not quiveling. I'm not quiveling.
I just don't want a new HOA to come back and say, why did you do this? We don't want to do this anymore.
I do.
That's something that I'll put out there, I don't think it bears further discussion. So, I'm pretty much done it this.
And ultimately, for your board, the question is whether it meets the criteria for site plan approval regardless, and that, and, you know, the construct, you have a HOA that, for whatever reason, has a design review committee that's comprised of not just members, or not a community, smattering of community members who would be representative in terms of diverse interests potentially. Yeah.
Is everyone satisfied? Can we move forward now with this, what we need to do? You want to read your resolution off?
Yes. We'll start with the lot line change. Now therefore be it resolved, then in accordance with the subdivision law, the planning board hereby approves the minor subdivision entitled Lot Mergers, lots 27 and 29, by Kirk Horton, subject to the following conditions: approval by the planning board attorney of the proposed deed for the combined lots; confirmation by the planning board's engineer that any remaining technical comments have been satisfied; signing and dating of the approved plats by the owners of record; the signing and sealing of the approved plat by the surveyor, granting permission to file from Dutchess County Department of Health; and confirmation that the applicant has paid any outstanding invoices to the town. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the approved plat, certifying it as the approved final plat based upon the applicant's compliance with the above conditions and the final plat submission requirements of the subdivision law. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the subdivision law, no changes, erasures, modifications, or revisions shall be made to the approved final plat after its signing by the chair in the event that any of that occurs. The plat shall be considered null and void, and the board shall institute proceedings to have the plat stricken from the records of the Dutchess County Clerk's Office and the town clerk's office. Be it further resolved that within five days of the day of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with the town of Amenia Town Clerk, and a copy shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five-day period. And be it resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. You need a motion?
Don't need a motion. Need a motion?
I move that the, I'm sorry. I move that we accept the resolution approving the lot line change for Lakeside 27.
You second? I'll second it.
The board's resolution was voted on with all members of the planning board voting as follows: Robert Boils Jr., chairperson.
Yes.
Nina Peet, deputy chairperson.
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos is absent. James Walsh.
Yes.
Walter Dietrich.
Yes.
Kenneth Topolsky.
Yes.
James Vitello is absent.
Are you going to read the next resolution?
Yes. This is a resolution approving the site plan for Lakeside 27 LLC, picking up with the resolve clauses. Be it resolved that based on the application, the planning board hereby grants site plan review approval for the project and approves the site plan prepared by RENIA Engineering dated June 20th, 24, 2024. This is the approved site plan. Be it further resolved that the chair is authorized to sign the approved site plan upon receipt of the following items: confirmation that any outstanding comments from the planning board's engineer have been satisfied, and confirmation of payment to the town of any and all outstanding escrow or other fees. Be it further resolved that no building permit shall be issued for the project until the town has received the following: copies of all discretionary approvals from other agencies for the project, and payment of any and all outstanding escrow or other fees. Be it further resolved that as required by New York State town law, a copy Be it further resolved that as required by New York State Town Law, a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the Town of Amenia Clerk's office within five days after this resolution has been adopted, and a copy shall be provided to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Need a motion?
I move that we approve the revol- excuse me, resolution approving the site plan for Lakeside 27 LLC.
You second? You want to second it? I'll second it. Call vote.
Foregoing resolution was voted upon with all members of the planning board voting as follows: Robert Boils Jr., Chairperson.
Yes.
Nina Peet, Deputy Chairperson.
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos is absent. James Walsh.
Yes.
Walter Dietrich.
Yes.
Kenneth Tapolsky.
Yes.
And Jamie Vitello is absent.
Thank you all.
Move on to Troutbeck. Move on to Troutbeck. You're up, Rich.
Good evening. Rich Renia, the engineer for the project. At the last meeting, we had opened up the public hearing. I believe the public was heard. Then we got into a discussion on the visuals from 343 and how it relates to the temporary construction staging area, and we were asked to provide an updated visual. So that was completed and submitted. And I don't know if everybody has one in their packet, if you want, if everybody's looked at it, or if there's anything you'd like me to explain about it. I gave Judy extra copies if anybody needs one.
Yeah, can you review it so that everyone on camera and all folks here can, can see it?
Thank you, Judy.
Okay, starting on sheet one, which at the top left-hand corner says vantage point one, and then in the bottom right-hand corner, it says one. The small picture in the upper corner is the picture with no mitigation, and the proposed construction staging area and the fencing is actually highlighted in an orange color so it would stand out, because otherwise it kind of does get lost in the picture because it is further away, but we thought it was better to highlight that. So that's what you would see with the, the orange color. That's where the construction staging, just the top of the fence and the, the storage buildings, would be seen. Then the picture further to the right is the mitigated version with the proposed plantings that are in the landscape plan on sheet seven of the Phase Two Site Plan Set. So that's with the exact landscaping, the size of the plant, the trees that are proposed on the landscaping plan at day one. So that represents that you clearly, it will clearly be screened and not seen. And at the bottom is a profile, and you can see from the road, you would look across to the open field that's open now, will get planted. So this is the orchard trees here, and then the orange that you see over here to the right is the, the temporary construction staging area. And then if you flip the side, there's a, or flip the page to page two, basically the same setup, but from a slightly different vantage point along 343. Once again, in the upper picture, you see unmitigated with the orange highlight in the background, and then in the larger picture below that, you see with the plants, the mitigated version of it, that the construction area completely disappears. And then at the bottom, once again, is another cross-section.
So the, the tree, so I guess it's just a couple of clarifications. So the orange, the fencing is shown in orange, but it's not in fact.
It's not orange. It's going to be, we specified on the plan as green.
Yep.
But like I said, it gets lost in the picture if you.
Indeed. And the four trees that are shown in the foreground on both images, some, none of those currently exist, or the two more easterly trees are there already?
On vantage point one or two?
Yeah, both, same, right? So here's vantage point one.
So the.
Four trees, one, two, three, four, actually five. Are none of these currently exist, or some of them?
Oh, these large trees in the foreground, those exist. Those, that's that row of trees that exists along 343.
That's what I thought.
Exactly, yes, yes. Those, those exist.
That's the next question.
So that's why those are in the first, the small picture up above.
Understood.
So, but if you look at the profile, it's basically the planting of the orchard. That's a, a lower tree, because the crab apple trees are considered more of a shrub tree. They get up to 20, 25 feet tall, so they do more of an effective screening as opposed to the larger trees along the road, which get 60 to 80 feet tall, and you see under as they get older.
Yeah, I guess it's just a little confusing, because this image doesn't show these trees, but they are, they actually are, are already there.
Yes.
So, yes, they're not in the image, but they do currently exist.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
All right.
Cool.
And then, in addition to this, I provided a, an additional clarification letter, just
to clarify that the proposed, the proposed orchard trees, as shown in the rendering, have a caliber size of five to six inches, which is a larger tree. It's a mature tree to start with, but that is the size of the tree proposed in the landscaping plan that we're asking for approval on. So Troutbeck is proposing to plant very significant-sized trees, basically mature trees.
The letter also specifies.
Sorry. Sorry.
The letter specifies the planting time. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah.
Can you comment on that?
Yes, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Ken was going to say anything on your inter. So the letter proposed that the planting time would be within the first two planting seasons after the approval date, so that there's enough time to acquire that large material. Some, what we experienced in the past with larger tree stock, some might be available, so they may be able to get some done in planting season one, and then you might need a second planting season, because you have to order some more material, and sometimes you have to order a season ahead.
But, I, I'm sorry, but just one, looking at the letter, one point of further clarification on that is it's anticipated that would occur either before or at the same time as they put up the construction fence. Is that where you go? Yeah, I was going to, yeah, in that direction, yeah.
Yeah, that's the other piece of the puzzle, that the idea is to get this planted before or at the same time as the construction area. So the construction area isn't constructed, and then you're waiting a year or two for somebody to plant the, the trees.
Okay.
The idea is to get that done right in the beginning.
I'm assuming also, behind the apple trees going, I guess we're going south, behind it, behind the apple trees, we're talking about evergreens as a, I see behind the trees you have these little.
Yeah, yeah, the, the lower shrub trees.
And they're going to be evergreens?
Yes, there's a mix of evergreens.
So that's going to be acting as a barrier or fence behind, and the construction's going to be behind it.
Be behind that, yes.
Yeah, this isn't related to the visuals, but can you remind me what the traffic mitigation measures were for during and after construction relative to traffic on Yellow City? Because I think since we last met, since this board last met, there'd been two pretty major accidents at that intersection.
Yes, I've heard about the accident.
Yeah, so I guess just revisiting kind of what we had decided, what was documented as part of the approval, if you have it handy, or if you guys can just run through that.
Yeah, well, I'll start off, and then if John wants to chime in. The general overview of the traffic study, we had said before, as part of the ARP, that a full traffic study was done by a separate firm, and that traffic study resulted in finding that the Leedsville Road intersection has the best level of service, and that's the one that should be being used. It has the best site distance, it has the best area for stacking of cars waiting. So the entire layout, the entire idea that was brought into the ARP as a result of that is to direct all traffic that we can towards Leedsville. So what resulted from the ARP, and which has been carried through to Phase Two, is any traffic, would, no traffic would be exiting Troutbeck onto Yellow City and then coming back onto 343. Anybody coming from Amenia heading to the east towards the Connecticut side, they could turn onto Yellow City and get into the back of the manor house, but once you're into the Troutbeck property, you then have to stay on property and exit and go all the way through and get to Leedsville. And Phase Two includes the creation of that connection. So as, as, that was the other item that we talked about in the beginning of Phase Two, is getting that connection done sooner rather than later, because we feel that it'll, would improve things for the neighborhood.
And I, and I think the other, the other elements, Phase Two, as it is now constituted, includes gates and driveway enhancements on Yellow City to make moving in better, but it also includes gates and intersection improvements on Leedsville, so it makes getting in and out at that end better. So because everything will now be gated and controlled, they will have that ability to make sure traffic goes. And the reason that they wanted to move it up so quickly is it's also tied with the construction. So instead of having construction vehicles entering willy-nilly, construction vehicles will be directed to Leedsville and come in that way. That was the discussion we had at last meeting, if you will.
Yeah, I remember that. So that'll be, that's a condition of approval, that when you, when construction is ongoing, you're going to be directing all trucks and other construction-related traffic people, all your workers, to not make the right-hand or left-hand turn onto Yellow City?
That's the representation in their submissions, yes.
I'd like to wad Troutbeck. From the meetings I've been coming to, it seems that they've addressed every comment that's been made by this board. They have been patient, and they have gone beyond a lot of what was asked of them. And it is a valuable historic piece of our community. I appreciate all they've done, and I urge the board to move ahead and approve tonight's resolutions.
Do you have any other comment from the board? Is there any other comment from the board? As it being seen on, you've got to do your resolution.
Okay. We've provided a draft resolution together with site plan review findings, and then also because the board had adopted a prior negative declaration pursuant to seeker for the entire ARP, we've gone through for the board and shown how Phases Two and Six will be consistent with that negative declaration, and will in some cases actually reduce potential impacts. In the case of the Delamater House substantially by eliminating a restaurant and essentially just having a two-unit lodging facility. So that, we've, we've gone through, if you have any questions about those, we're glad to answer them, but I could also just start with the now, now therefore. So the resolution reads, be it resolved that based on the application made pursuant to the zoning law and New York State Town Law, the planning board hereby grants site plan review approval for Phase Two and approves the following site plans for Phase Two. Then there's a long list of the reports and plans that have been provided in support of Phase Two. Then be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan review approval for Phase Six. That's Phase Six approval and approves the following site plans. These are also the approved site plans for Phase Six, a long list there on the bottom of page three. Be it further resolved that the chairman's authorized to sign the approved site plans, certifying them as final upon receipt of the following items: Confirmation that any outstanding comments from the planning board's engineer have been satisfactorily addressed, including providing an updated set of site plans based on his comments; Confirmation that the engineer has reviewed and accepted the technical details of the project's SWIP and proof of coverage of Phase Two and Phase Six under New York State DEC Speed East General Permit; Confirmation of payment to the Town of any and all outstanding escrow or, or other fees. Be it further resolved that no permit shall be issued for Phase Two or Phase Six until the planning board has received proof, has received the following: Proof of recording with the Dutchess County Clerk of a conservation easement and historic easement consistent with the conservation findings that has been determined to be acceptable by the planning board's chairman and attorney; And payment of any and all outstanding escrow or other fees related to the application. And be it further resolved that no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for Phase Two or Phase Six until the planning board has received the following: Confirmation from the planning board engineer that proposed landscaping for Two and Six have been installed in accordance with approved landscaping plans; And proof of any Dutchess County Board, Department of Health permit to operate the water supply and on-site wastewater treatment systems to service Phases Two and Six; Proof of coverage under the Speed East General Permit or issuance of an individual Speed East permit, whichever DEC deems appropriate for the on-site wastewater treatment facilities serving the two phases; Confirmation by the planning board engineer that all improvements shown on the final approved site plans with respect to Phase Two and Phase Six have been fully installed or completed. To obtain such confirmation, the applicant shall file with the planning board engineer a complete set of certified as-built plans and the written certification of a New York State licensed engineer that the improvements have been installed or otherwise completed in conformance with the final approved site plans, with any deviations noted and explained. The as-built plan and certification will serve as the basis for determination by the planning board's engineer that Phases Two and Six have been constructed in accordance with the final approved site plans, as may be amended. Be it further resolved that all landscaping that is planted pursuant to Phase Two and Phase Six shall be maintained until it is successfully established, and any dead or dying landscaping shall be replaced in kind no later than the following planting season and similarly maintained. Be it further resolved that in accordance with the zoning law, this site plan review of Phase Two and Phase Six shall expire if Troutbeck fails to commence construction to obtain necessary building permits or fails to comply with the conditions of this Phase Two and Phase Six Amendment approval within eight, 18 months of its issuance. The planning board may grant a one-time, six-month extension. The site plan amendment approval may be revoked if Troutbeck violates the approval or its conditions, or engages in any construction or alteration not authorized, and any violation of its approval or its conditions shall be deemed a violation of the zoning law and subject to enforcement action. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be filed with the town clerk and provided to the applicant within a five-day period upon its adoption. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Need a motion to accept the resolution?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Call vote, Judy.
Foregoing resolution was voted upon with all members of the planning board voting as follows: Robert Boils Jr., Chairperson.
Yes.
Nina Peet, Deputy Chairperson.
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos is absent. James Walsh.
Yes.
Walter Dietrich.
Yes.
Kenneth Tapolsky.
Yes.
Jamie Vitello is absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diana's here. You're up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was silent, yeah? Patrick has heard too. Had you too.
Well, good evening. Diana Kolev from the front of Del Bello, Donnellan, Wine Garden, Wise, and Whittaker. I'm here for the Siland application. Also here tonight is Patrick O'Leary from V H B who's, was here at the last meeting. That was before you were aboard in, in May. We walked you through the application. As you recall, this was originally considered and reviewed in 2022 and has since then been before you because of some procedural issues that were, that were seeking to rectify. And so, we're here if there's any further questions. I believe all comments have been addressed at this time.
Excuse me. To the best of my knowledge and belief, most of the issues have been resolved. I think the primary issue that anyone had was the final operations matters. And I think they kind of got resolved. I think we changed the language. They improved the readability. They improved what happened and they issued a couple of clarifications. So, I believe that the comments that have been issued on that to date have been satisfactorily resolved in the most recent one. And then, all other matters are subject to this approval and resolution going forward. If I may, I think there's one discussion I need to just clarify because it, I think it baffles everyone. The way that the building inspector has issued building permits and will continue to issue building permits going forward is that individual applications, in other words, for instance, the next item that may fall would be the skating rink. That would get its own building permit. The likely follow-up would be the fieldhouse. The likely component of that would be the swimming pool, all of which get building permits. When they are completed and when they are, meet the requirements, he then issues their certificate of occupancy. So, the way this is kind of crafted anticipates that he will be issuing building permits and following up with certificates of occupancy as things are finished. A lot of the resolutions hinge on the final certificate of occupancy, which would likely be the fieldhouse, the way it's been proposed. But, that's why this is kind of peculiar because the only way, most of these components have electrical issues, have plumbing issues, have other things which require their own independent review and building permit approval. That's why they're being done this way. And the only good way to keep track of it is to use the word "final," if you will, so that Mike knows that if, so long as he has one building permit open, he can't issue that final C O until certain things are done. That's the way it's, it's tied together. The other one is, just, just as a clarification, when you get to the resolution, deals with D O T. D O T, they don't have their final permit yet, but they, there is a condition that they can't use that entrance until they get their permit, build it, and D O T has signed off on it. Now, that may occur before their final C O. So, if that occurs first, they can use it. If it doesn't, they, they have to, it has to be satisfied before they get that final building permit and then they can use it. So, it's, we're really trying to tie all this to the way the building inspector, your code enforcement officer sees this progressing so that we don't have a repeat of kind of what happened. In other words, they got their permits before they were entitled to their permits. So, that's why everything's kind of tied now to C Os and the way my, and, and I have had several discussions with Mike. So, this is, this is pretty consistent with his thinking and how he would approach this. That's all I need to say.
So, just to clarify, each component of Siland gets, gets a building permit, is built, and then, once that is complete, it gets its individual C of O?
As long as everything's tied to that is satisfactory, yes, ma'am.
In the agreement, I look to see what fees there might be. And there's one mention of applicable fee, which I wasn't quite sure whether that was an application fee. Are there any other fees that would be incurred by a civic group using the facility?
I'll let Patrick answer that.
Good evening. Patrick O'Leary, here before the board. I'm no longer with V H B, so I'm retired and on my own. The fees that would be applicable, for example, using the pickleball tennis courts, things of that nature, no, they're open-air. The times that have been allotted, people will go in there and use it. If they're using the hockey rink, for example, need to get a Zamboni driver. They're not readily available, you know, anywhere on the street and people just can't do it. So, there would be a fee to pay the Zamboni operator to go out there and refresh the ice. So, that would be the type of fee that would be associated with it. If there was a civic event and they needed to be traffic control, something of that nature, right, it would be the responsibility of the civic organization to pay for the traffic control if there was a police officer or something necessary.
Lifeguards?
There's no pool.
There's no pool that's available for lifeguards, so we don't have to consider that.
Then, do we need a schedule of what we will be charged for? Or do we put down something in good faith? Or do we, so that we're not getting into a situation where it's all à la carte?
I, I.
I'm just asking, I'm not.
I think, you know, the intent here, opening this up to the public, for the public to use it, right? It's not a money-making situation for Siland or otherwise. They're trying to be good citizens in the community from that standpoint. And so, any fees like operational for a Zamboni owner or something like that, it's fair, they're not looking to create fees to charge the community for using the facility. It's just to cover those potential costs.
I'm not implying it's a profit center. I'm saying, let's just make it fair so that we list subject to operational expenses or whatever to be negotiated in good faith, just something so that we don't go in going, why are we getting charged this when it's fair for you to charge us for something?
And I, I think that would be fine if we, you know, ultimately want to make a revision in the agreement to say, the fee shall be negotiated in good faith. We're absolutely in favor of it. We just couldn't identify all the fees right now because it hasn't been in operation yet. You know, we want to get it operating stabilized, see how it operates. If we can open more events, we will open more events in the future. We, we're just not sure how, how, what the use is going to be. So, same thing with the fees. We don't operationally know exactly what it's going to cost to get a Zamboni driver out there for, on Monday night if the town wants to use it. But, we'll certainly do it in good faith and happy to add that to the resolution.
Thank you.
So, just, just in the interest of time, if, if the board is willing to consider the resolutions tonight, if that's something that could be simply written in as opposed to having to?
You could do it that way or you could just have, have that be one of, it's a comment that's provided that has to be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning board's engineer because we already have that condition in here. And John and I will work with Patrick and Diana.
I, I don't think this requires anything out of the ordinary. And I, I think it's just going to be a question that, the, the only thing I was going to suggest is, is with other similar-type things, what they do is on an annualized, on an annual basis, they, they post the outline of the typical fees for use of the facility. And if you added that to the backyard at Siland and Siland reserves the right to, you know, do that, I think that's probably one of the fairest ways to do it.
Would that be?
Yeah.
That be sufficient? Okay. So, we'll make sure that happens and we'll run it, we'll email it around to the board so you can have a last look at it.
John, you, I think someone circulated, did you have additional comments on the?
I had, I had comments dated eight, seven.
Okay.
And I can read them to you.
Can you do that?
Yep.
I'm not able to.
On, on, on Page Two, there, there was a, a, a comment about platform tennis courts are not in operation from May through October. I thought that was kind of strange and I didn't know whether it was a typo or not, but it's been subsequently confirmed that the platform tennis courts will not be in operation May through October.
For, for anyone?
For anyone.
They're just, that's, it's a winter sport.
Yeah.
So, that, that, that clarification was issued and then, the only other comment I had was near the end, the general rules and regulations, the pool house, field house, and annex buildings are not available for community group access or use. And they, there was a red line that was removed and says are not considered part of the backyard at Siland. They took that out. They're just not available for the public use. They're, they're kind of restricted use to their, what they call their third-party obligees. So, and then, other than that, I think everything else was, was generally acceptable and addressed your concerns. So, I, I have been satisfied.
Thank you.
My, the only thought I had, did, did we receive a visual analysis of where this site is going to occur? Some of the concerns that I've heard from the public is that coming down Delavern Hill, things are a little bit unsightly. Is this going to appear so that the public can see this facility from the hill?
Well, I, I think there was a visual analysis done. It was actually reviewed by George James. And I don't think you can see this from Delavern Hill. You can see it from the train station. You can see it from a couple of walking trails. You can see it from 22. But, the way this is situated, it's kind of down and around. So, if you come down Delavern Hill, you see Silo. You will not see Siland, to the best of my knowledge. And I think that, that, that analysis was prepared and submitted, Mr. Walsh.
All right, thank you.
And actually reviewed in some detail with the board.
Okay. All right, very good. Just wanted to get some clarification.
And the upshot of it is, I think George James said, because what they have is they showed that the key issue has been the domes and the visibility of the domes, which is not something that the board had looked at before. And so, when George looked at the simulations, he said, yep, that's what you see, you know, and, and the landscaping, which will go along the highway over time, will provide some screening. He doesn't know how quickly, how much. So, what we've done with the resolution is, with the applicant's consent, is to build in a five-year review. So, they're required to plant the landscaping and then, five years after plant, within five years after the planting, you all will have another opportunity to look at that and say, okay, this is what we're now seeing from the rail trail. Is, is it enough? Shall we supplement? And the applicant would be required to supplement based on the planning board's review.
You know, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned because previous landscaping hasn't occurred that was in a plan. We're talking about going back when they first initiated the, the development of Silo Ridge. And some of the landscaping hasn't occurred. So, I'm just wondering if there needs to be some kind of bond so that we can be ensured that this landscaping will occur.
But, what you, what you could do, so right now, under the resolution, they are required by, to install the landscaping by October 31st of this year.
Or they don't get a C O for the courts. So, they can't put the domes up and they can't use the courts this winter.
Right.
So, so.
They got a lot of incentive.
I guess if you consider, from a practical standpoint, I'd rather have the C O and not be able to install the domes than hold a bond that you got to.
Deal with, yeah.
So, I, I think we, we've, we've made an effort to achieve what you were seeking. In other words, if you want to put your domes up, you got to get your landscaping done. And I think they, they agree with that and they, because it's more than just the landscaping. It's the fence on whaling. It's cleaning up and finishing the grading along that whole side. So, there's a substantial incentive for them to complete that.
And I would go a step further. If they don't comply by the date, that's a violation of the special permit and the town can revoke the special permit.
So.
So, we, for us, it was belt, belt and suspenders to get to what you wanted.
I was going to say, it's belt and suspenders.
So, who's going to monitor that they comply with all this?
Unfortunately, you've identified me as the individual who's responsible for making sure they comply. So, there, there's your answer.
Thank you.
Mike can't issue a C O until I get from them a certification that has been done, have some sort of as-built, and have conducted a verification evaluation and then provided a written documentation before he can issue the C O. So, it's either me or my successor, whichever, whichever happens.
I just want to go back to one thing. Sorry to harp on this. I believe we should have eventually a location agreement or a site rental agreement, whatever it is, that basically says, we are using the site on this day from these hours to these hours, we are entitled to, we cannot bring in food or we can bring in food or what, it's something that ultimately protects the owner of the property and it protects the person renting the property. I say this having rented hundreds of locations and been sued many times. I lived in California.
Right.
So, I want to make sure that we have an agreement that's specific so we know, hey, great, we can do this. And you know, hey, great, we don't have to worry about this. So, somewhere we need to incorporate that.
I, I think, while I agree with you, I think Paul and I did our best to keep us out of that chain because that's really not the town's responsibility. That, that would be between Siland and the potential renters. And I think the way this is written, it kind of contemplates a written agreement between the parties. And if you need some further clarification in there, we can probably work with counsel to get that language in there. But, so, all you're saying is good contracts make good users. So, we might, to make sure that the contract is.
Okay, so I'll sue you and Paul.
Yeah, there definitely is a contemplated, you know, access and demnification agreement, a waiver. I mean, so, yeah, we're, we're definitely going to do this the right way.
So, we can ask to see it and, and make sure it's acceptable in form and substance, but we got to be careful.
That'll be in check. We'd like to move forward.
Civic group rules. We'll get that out of here.
Yes.
We'll get, we'll get a draft.
Get a resolution for this?
Yes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that based on the application and the zoning law and New York State town law, the planning board hereby grants special permit and site plan approval for the project and conditionally approves the following site plans. And there's a whole one, two, three, four pages of site plans listed.
There's over 50 drawings just.
Picked up that, and this includes the operations plan is the last one listed. Be it further resolved that the chair is authorized to sign the approved site plans upon receipt of the following items: confirmation that any remaining comments from the planning board's engineer have been satisfactorily addressed; confirmation of payment to the town of any and all outstanding escrow or other fees related to the application; be it further resolved that upon signing the approved site plans by the planning board chair, the C E O may issue any building permits necessary for construction of the project consistent with the approved site plan. consistent with the approved site plans. Be it further resolved that no certificate of occupancy shall be issued by the CEO for the project's constructed court facilities, including the seasonal domes, until the CEO has received written confirmation from the planning board engineer of the following: installation of eight-foot-high fencing along the Waylands land, installation of the landscaping along New York State Route 22, and the Waylands land is shown on sheet on the landscaping plan, that any lighting fixtures for the courts not shown on the approved site plans have been disconnected from operation. Receive from the applicant of an acceptable ASBILT plan for the court facilities, which has been certified by a New York State licensed engineer, that the facilities have been installed or otherwise completed in conformance with the approved site plans, with any deviations noted and satisfactorily explained. Be it further resolved that any certificate of occupancy for the court facilities shall include a condition that the seasonal domes are only allowed between November 1st and March 31st of each year. Be it further resolved that no final certificate of occupancy shall be issued for the project until all improvements shown on the approved site plans have been fully installed or completed, and the, excuse me, and the CEO has received the following proof of the issuance of a highway work permit from DOT, written confirmation from the planning board engineer that all the above conditions required for the court facilities have been satisfied, proof of Dutchess County Health Department permit to operate the water and sewer systems, written confirmation by the planning board's engineer that the project has been constructed in accordance with the approved site plans, as may be amended based upon a complete set of satisfactory ASBILT plans submitted by the applicant and certified by a New York State licensed engineer, that the project has been completed in conformance with the approved site plans, with any deviations noted. Be it further resolved that no access to or from the project site from Route 22 shall be allowed until either a certificate of occupancy or a, has been issued by the CEO, or the New York State DOT has accepted the completed access onto Route 22, whichever occurs first. Be it further resolved that parking on the site for any community event shall be limited to no more than 50 vehicles and 50 participants. The applicant shall strictly adhere to this requirement. Also, the applicant shall include this requirement in all leases agreements and/or rental documents used for such events. Be it further resolved that the seasonal domes, this is a repeat, and, excuse me, if I may stop for a second. Was it November 1st and March 31st? I thought, was that acceptable, or did, did you, was it-
Our, our only comment on this was that it takes a couple of weeks usually to, to put the domes up and to take them down since they are substantial. So it was, rather than, you know, the word allowed, we were asking for the word in use or in operation, or utilization.
Is that right?
Because, because it does, you know, there's a contractor that has to come out, you know, and take it down, and so I just didn't want people to think that we were keeping them up past that.
And what I was actually going to do is, and I thought I'd done it, it just had not gotten picked up here, that they would, I was going to give them a couple weeks on either side for, and just say, you know, between, so it'd be October 15th and April 15th.
Or just what, what attorney recommended that it would be in use.
I don't, but the in use, to me, means you don't know, we don't know if they're in use or not.
Right.
So can't you put in something saying that construction or deconstruction for those two weeks?
Right.
That would be, that would-
If I can make that adjustment, if you guys are comfortable with that, okay.
Since we're asking questions at the bottom of number seven, be it, of page seven, be it further resolved that no access to or from the project site from Route 22 shall be allowed until either a final certificate of occupancy has been issued by the CEO for the project, or the New York State DOT has accepted the completed access on. So it's not the project, right?
I'm sorry? The final CEO has, final CEO has been issued by the CEO for the project. That's based on the-
What is project?
Well, here, here, this is one of those ones that the engineer mirrored me, I had this discussion with Paul, didn't make sense, because it, it's basically, I can't issue a final CO for the project unless I've got DOT sign off anyway. So what, what it would end up happening is, there is the eventuality that DOT may give a sign off before, for instance, the field house is completed. So they would want to then use that access for public access. So basically, I would take that out, that basically says that no access to or from the project site from Route 22 shall be allowed until New York State DOT has accepted and the completed access, has accepted the completed access onto Route 22.
Oh, great.
I'm good with that. I think you guys-
I think it means the same thing, Diana, as what you were trying to accomplish.
Yes, that's, that's what we're trying to-
Yes. So if, if they get that tomorrow, we could allow it.
Sure.
All right, so that's, okay, back on track. And this is my favorite condition. Be it further resolved that by October 31st, 2024, applicant shall install the landscaping along New York State Route 22 in Waylands land, as shown on the landscaping plans. If certain species of trees are not available due to time of year, those species shall be installed by no later than April 30th, 2025, unless a further extension is granted by the planning board. In the fifth year following, October 31st, 2024, I just wanted to be clear, it's between November of 2029 and October 31st of 2030, you have a year to, to do this review. The planning board may review the adequacy of the screening of the seasonal domes from public vantage points, and may require such additional landscaping as may be reasonably necessary to ensure the substantial screening of the domes from those public vantage points. If the planning board reasonably determines that more landscaping is required to screen the domes, the applicant shall provide a supplemental landscaping plan for review and approval. The applicant shall implement the approved supplemental landscaping plan within the timeframe specified by the planning board. Be it further resolved that once installed, the applicant shall maintain all landscaping shown on the approved site plans until it is successfully established, and shall, as an ongoing condition, replace any dead or dying trees, which are the same species in height as originally planted. Be it further resolved that any change of use from the use approved herein shall require an amended special permit. Be it further resolved that any violation of the special permit shall be deemed a violation as chapter and shall be subject to enforcement as provided in the zoning law. Be it further resolved that as required by Town Law, a copy of the resolution shall be filed with the town clerk and provided to the applicant within five days after this resolution has been adopted. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
I'll make a motion to approve, to grant site special permit and site plan approval for Silan Recreation Facility incorporating revisions just discussed.
Do we have to say as amended?
Yeah, she just did.
Did you say as amended? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
She, yeah, as amended, yes.
As amended.
Can you second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Call, vote.
Beforegoing resolution was voted upon with all members of the planning board, voting as follows. Robert Boils, junior chairperson.
Yes.
Nina Peet, deputy chairperson.
Yeah.
John Stephanopoulos is absent. James Walsh.
Abstain.
Walter Dietrich.
Yes.
Ken Topolsky.
Yes.
And Jamie Vitello is absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're very welcome, Miss.
You can, sure. I would like to request with your permission, and the board's permission, of course, to potentially work with Ms. Westfall to schedule a 15-minute time at one of the September planning board meetings. I'd like to bring in the new management at Silo Ridge in the name of transparency, so you're not just seeing representatives, consultants on their behalf, but you actually see the management team. You can ask them questions, and they can give you maybe a five-minute overview of their vision. I know you have very busy schedules, so prior to doing this, and if you suggest October, or you don't want to do it, but I would like to put this out there in front of you so that you have an opportunity to meet the management staff, the entire board.
With your pleasure, board.
Sure. Can we do it at the second meeting in, in September?
Yeah.
Yeah, same, probably better.
And we'll keep it short, 15, 20 minutes, you know, at your discretion.
Whatever the second, uh-
25th.
The 25th.
I will coordinate that, and we'll see on the 25th.
25th, and we'll bring them in first, get them in now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. There's one other thing, it's Roseanne's birthday today, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday. I see you're celebrating appropriately by coming to a planning board meeting.
We need the approval of the minutes of 7:10:24.
I did not get a chance to read them, so just FYI.
Anyone else want to make a motion?
I have completely approved, I have seconded it.
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carries. There will be no meeting in two weeks. I don't have the dates off the top of my head. There's 28, there'll be no meeting. The next meeting will be September 11th.
Very good.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask a question.
May I?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I got the same question, I don't know what else to go about. What's this about Cumberland Farms? We got an email on this today?
Cumberland Farms. Apparently, from what I am led to believe, they've been having problems with their wastewater disposal system. It has failed. They are under order from the local health department to repair it. They've been going back and forth to come up with a repair and replacement scheme. My understanding is they are nearing approval. However, that approval requires modifications to the site plan that was previously approved. So when Mike got me involved in this, which was probably in January of this year, I kind of said, you got to come back to the planning board. And I did talk with Jim Offright at the health department, and he said, look, he said, we really need to get this fixed. He says, let's come up with a plan, let's everybody agree that we get something that's approvable, and then they'll come back to you. Because it doesn't make sense to come to you unless they've got an approvable plan. And I, I don't want, what I don't want to do is have a failing septic system and be playing games. So that's why I, the closer we get, I keep reminding them, but I wanted Mike to be aware, and I'm sure that's why he transmitted it to you folks.
Okay.
So that's where we are. We, we, it is, it is, they are working diligently with the health department, and there've been a lot going back and forth, because if you remember, there's floodplain impacts, there's, there's floodway impacts, there's a retaining wall, there's a bunch of other things that are going to have to go on to make this all happen. So until they got health department approval, and the health department says, yeah, that makes sense, I didn't see the need to come back to you, but they will have to come back in my estimation for an amended site plan.
Yeah, I think we had, when we had approved the site plan originally, there was also landscaping requirements along the Route 22 side, which I don't, I'm, I'm, I mean, yeah, 44.
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure those have, have been bad.
That was before my time. That was my associate, and when she, when it came into my office and she saw what it was, she said, don't even speak to me. She said, that was, that took years off my life. I said, okay, great, now it's taken years off mine. But anyway, so that's where we are.
Okay.
One other thing, there, you need a waiver from the planning board to review the Hudson River Housing stuff?
That's correct.
Okay.
We'll generate a letter for Hudson River Housing. We represent them on other matters, and they are apparently going to be coming back to the planning board. So I'll, I'll prepare a letter, and if the chairman is willing, waive the conflict, and they've indicated in the past that they would waive the conflict as well.
All right, sounds good.
And in the meantime, it's clocked very firmly on my plate, so I've got some homework to do on that, and some other things to do.
Good. Is that all being said, we need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
You can second?
Second.
All in favor?
Who is the second, Walter?